Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our FY26 Budget Public Hearing. Today's date is August 27, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we will begin with a moment of silence. Okay, next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Larry, can I get you to start us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to its citizens, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. I will begin with the Chairman's opening remarks. First, I want to thank everyone who is here tonight. Having an engaged citizenry is an essential component of a well-functioning government. As you know, tonight is an opportunity where you can and should be heard about the budgets before us. I respectfully ask that we maintain decorum and respect for others who are here tonight. Please refrain from being disruptive by interjecting yourself when others are speaking and making excessive noise. Instead, I ask that you raise your hands to show that you're in agreement with a speaker. When we transition into the public testimony segment later, everyone will have a chance to speak for three minutes. Please complete a comment card in the back of the room and turn it in to staff if you would like to speak tonight. And when you do speak, please address the board and not anybody else. I'd also like to clarify a couple items related to budgets. Approving an item in a budget is not the same as approving the expenditure of the item later in the year. I will repeat that. Approving an item in the budget is not the same as approving the expenditure of the item later. The budget process is to identify where funds will come from and where they can allowableably be spent. County Commissioners play a unique role, unlike legislatures, where we not only set the budget, but we also later authorize the expenditure of those funds throughout the fiscal year. Just because something is in a budget does not mean it will automatically be approved for expenditure. Conversely, if something is not in the budget, it does not mean it cannot be added and approved later. It's important to make that distinction. Again, thank you for attending tonight's FY26 Budget Public Hearing, and I'd like to ask if any of my other Commissioners up here would like to make a statement. Please do.
I just want to echo, thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate the opportunity to hear from citizens. The past two years, the budget process has been very easy compared to preparing the FY26 budget. This has to do with sales tax remaining flat, our liquor going down, and the medical for employees and jail inmates have both increased by $1 million and $1.5 million respectfully. So, it's been a very challenging year, and we had the elected officials really dive deep and look into what was necessary so that we could get a cost of living raise for the employees. So just wanted to state that and looking forward to hearing from you.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Commissioner Eberlein.
So to ease your minds, I am not going to be wasting money, taxpayer dollars, on license plate readers.
Please just raise your hand, please. I could rattle on, but we don't, we don't need to. Okay, nothing else? No, okay. So we will move into the FY20, I'm sorry. We'll move into the FY26 Budget Hearing pursuant to Idaho Code 31-1605. These are discussion items, and the first one up is the Aquifer Protection District. And Nisha, you'll have to forgive me if I don't pronounce your last name correctly. Mayani?
Mayani.
Mayani.
Mayani, okay. And Larry Sims?
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Larry Sims, Chair of the Aquifer Protection District Board. And Nisha Mayani is here to do the presentation, so I will turn this over to Nisha.
All right. So, thank you. We at the Aquifer Protection District Advisory Board always appreciate this opportunity to come before the public and talk a little bit about who we are and what we do, because we don't always, we don't, we don't, we don't know if everybody, everybody knows. And also just talk about the importance of the Rathron Prairie Aquifer to this community. So I'm going to spend just a couple minutes doing that before we dive into the budget for that. So, so real quick here, the Board of County Commissioners established the Aquifer Protection District in 2007 for the protection of groundwater quality in the Rathron Prairie Aquifer, and this was done after a vote of the people. The Board of County Commissioners then appointed an advisory board that is in charge of developing work program elements, proposing methods of cooperation among agencies, and developing a budget recommendations for the Commissioners' consideration, which is what we're doing here tonight. Go ahead. Okay, so the Rathron Prairie Aquifer was discovered in 1895. It was formed during the Ice Age floods, where large flood volumes and flow rates deposited, large gravels, cobbles and boulders across the prairie. So starting up at Pondoree, there at the upper right of the screen, and then coming down Pondoree and all of the lakes that are at the perimeter of the Aquifer feeders to that. And the Aquifer is that darker gray area. And most of you will be familiar that if you dig in the prairie, you see large cobbles and gravels, and it is that large material that makes the Aquifer vulnerable to contaminant releases. So that is what we're trying to protect. This Aquifer supplies water to more than 500,000 people. That's across Cootney County and Spokane County. There's over 2,200 water wells in Cootney County. Go ahead. The Rathron Prairie Aquifer is recognized as a special source by the federal government, by Idaho, and locally. So in 1978, the federal, there was a federal sole source designation for the Aquifer, and that just meant that it's recognized that this source supplies over 50% of the drinking water in the area. And there's no alternative source in this area that can physically, legally, or economically supply the area, because this source requires no treatment. And then, I'm sorry. Going back real quick. So Idaho designated it a sensitive resource aquifer in 1997. There was a IDAPA code that Panhandle Health District previously operated under 410101. That was rescinded a few years back by the state. In the midst of doing that, Cootney County adopted what was under that rule, that set of rules, which was the five-acre rule that Cootney County uses, and the Critical Materials Program. So Cootney County has adopted both of those, which was a great thing in absence of what we had there through IDAPA. And Panhandle Health District has been working with the other cities. Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene have also adopted the Critical Materials Program, and then they've been working, another part of that was sewer management agreements with Athol and Dalton, who don't have central sewer. And Panhandle has been able to get those re-implemented as well since, since the recent recension, I don't know if that's a word, of IDAPA. So, go ahead. So this is the way the Aquifer Protection District works. There is a $5 currently, $5.74 charge per parcel within that blue boundary on the screen that is collected on an annual basis. So that works out to around $440,000 a year currently. In addition to that, the county collects another $100,000 per year from Burlington Northern, which was an agreement for that, with their conditional use permit for the refueling depot. So there's around 500,000, 540,000 in revenue that comes in to the Aquifer Protection District. Then the advisory board receives funding requests. That's typically January through March each year, and we consider those funding requests that are aimed at Aquifer protection with, with the intent of assisting regulatory bodies implementing educational programs or coordinating work of public agencies.
We apologize, we don't have a remote.
There's a little bit of, go ahead.
The largest portion of the funds go to our cooperating agencies, which is Panhandle Health District and the Department of Environmental Quality. It varies year to year, but it's anywhere from 60% to 90% of the funds go to those two entities. For DEQ, what is collected from BNSF, that $100,000 primarily covers what DEQ does in support of the Aquifer, which is monitoring the refueling depot. They also assist with education and outreach and provide technical assistance to local agencies, as well as administration oversight on the Aquifer. For Panhandle Health District, they use the fund for the Critical Materials Program. So any development that stores, or any business that stores hazardous materials over the Aquifer, Panhandle Health District goes in and does inspections to make sure that they're properly contained. Additionally, they do sewer and stormwater management. We mentioned Dalton and Athol having sewer management agreements, so that's where some of that funding goes to Panhandle Health District, as well as water quality sampling across the Aquifer. All right, go ahead. So for this year, we, we received, let's see, three, four, five, six, seven funding requests, and these were the requests that we recommended funding for. The first one's Confluence Project, which is an educational program focused on water resources for 10th through 12th grades. That's been going for quite a few years now. Spokane River Forum, they hold a conference on water topics in Spokane. So we, that's also another one that we've funded for several years. They also do, Spokane River Forum also does a waste and recycle directory. So if you have waste that you don't know what to do with, you can go onto that directory online and find where you can properly dispose of materials that we don't want going into the Aquifer. There's agromet stations that are used for irrigation for farms here, just for wise water use for ideal soil and farming conditions. The big one this year, we're recommending funding for the Mod Flow USG Rathron Prairie extent. So this will be a model of the Rathron Prairie Aquifer. Spokane County invested in a model on the Washington side several years ago, many, many years ago, that they've been updating and are updating. Idaho, our side, Cootney County doesn't have a model yet. So we felt like this was a good investment for the county. And then there was a request from Green Ferry Water and Sewer District, who is a water and sewer district on the edge of the Aquifer. They requested funds for well monitoring and septic education. And then funds to Water District 95C and Flood Control District 17 for the Twin Lakes spillway and Fish Creek measurement upgrades, so they can monitor how much water is going to the Aquifer through their dam. Okay, go ahead. Internally, the Aquifer Protection District, the board, advisory board, also does some internal projects. The Sensitive Aquifer Recharge Areas is the big one that we've been working on for the last three or four years. And so this map shows just areas over the Aquifer where there's high rates of infiltration and presence of water. So those areas are the ones that we want to provide highest levels of protection for. So we are working with Cootney County planning on potential modifications to the land use code to assist in protections for those areas, as well as implement education for protecting those areas and potentially in the future preservation of property through possible easements or land purchase. Want to also note that the Cootney, that Cootney County has staff that supports the Aquifer Protection, the advisory board, and so there's $36,000 that's taken out of the revenue to pay back the county for that administrative support. Go ahead. So I think I counted wrong, I said seven, but there was eight external requests, totaling $787,672. We've recommended all this year. We thought they were all important projects. We, our internal project total is $52,275. So that's a total budget of $839,947. So that's up quite a bit from last year. It requires that we use $321,000 from our fund balance. Right now, that fund balance is at one point, around 1.2 million. We've been very much trying to get that balance down. Ultimately, we hope to get that balance down to 300,000 that's unallocated funds. So that's, that's what we'll be working on. But we had some under, project, or DEQ and Panhandle Health District came under budget on some, on their expenses last year, and so that's part of why the fund balance grew again when we were trying to, we've been trying to pull it down. Go ahead. Okay, so this is the summary of the budget, that 839,000 total. And just the, how that splits out with those different funding requests. And that is what we have.
Thank you.
I think there's one more slide. I just want to do one more plug for the, the public to come to the Cootney County website for more information about the, what we do.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Eberlein?
I think it's important to note, too, that all of these funding requests that we get, they have to relate to Cootney County. We're not funding stuff for outside the county. When Nisha was saying that we're doing some things with Spokane, it's a collaborative effort. They're funding for their side, we provide funding for our side, so that all of our funding goes towards projects or endeavors that are within Cootney County. And I think that's important for the public to know, that we're not funding things outside the county.
Well, thank you for that clarification. If there's no questions, I will just thank you very much for coming in and giving us your presentation. So, I'm sorry, but we're not at a public testimony yet, so. Okay, next up is item two, and that's Cootney County Emergency Medical Services System. It's a discussion, and we have Chief Jay Winowski and Tracy Abrahamson.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present our budget for 2026. My name is Jay Winowski. I'm the chief for Cootney County EMS, and I'm going to start with a brief overview with some slides on what we do in the county and how the EMS system operates in the county. So we contract with 10 fire districts and one nonprofit ambulance service for EMS service delivery, ambulance transports for all of Cootney County. We have a We have eleven ambulances twenty-four hours a day countywide. Six of them are ALS or paramedic-level ambulances. They cover Cooten County Fire and Rescue District area, Coeur d'Alene City, and also Northern Lakes. That one part-time ambulance for the paramedic-level service is an added service, four days a week, paramedic-level service during, four days a week for Coeur d'Alene City. We have three twenty-four-hour EMT, the basic EMT and advanced EMT level ambulances in the surrounding areas of the county. So, we have Worley, we have Timberlake, and we also have Spirit Lake ambulances in those districts. And then, we also have a part-time with Eastside Fire to provide service in the western part of Lake Coeur d'Alene.
Next.
These are the agencies that we contract with that service the entire county. And then, as you'll see, Harrison Community Ambulance, which is a separate entity, is down the southern part. We also contract with Shoshone County, they have ambulance services as well, but we intersect with them, and they function under the western, or sorry, the eastern part of our district. And then, Hauser has their own ambulance, but we also help them, and they help us in times of need with transporting services and EMS supplies. We are the primary 911 emergency response for the entire county. We own all the ambulances, all the medical equipment on every piece of apparatus, so whether it's fire or ambulances, we own and maintain that equipment and supplies. We do interfacility transports within Cooten County, and we also do long-distance transports or out-of-county transports to assist other counties in the, in Region One. We will go into Bonner County when needed, they'll come and help us when needed, that type of thing. And we do what's called ALS intercepts. So, we have other ALS or EMS systems, for instance, Shoshone or Bonner. We will help them by providing services to some of the county areas that we share borders with. We do have a contract with the southern portion of Bonner County, and that's because of their distance from where they're stationed to, into Spirit Lake, Timberlake area. And so, we have a contract agreement with them that they'll support us when needed, we'll come support them when needed. Again, Shoshone County is, the other one is such a far distance from where we are, and they have ambulances, so we support each other in that situation. And then, Harrison Community Ambulance also provides coverage to the southeast portion of the county and the south part of Lake Coeur d'Alene. So, this is our tax revenue breakdown for the 2026. There are a three percent increase from tax money is a hundred-and-nine-thousand. We had fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen dollars from urban renewal district closures. We have sixty-two-thousand-seventy from new development coming in. We have a reduction in state tax and DMV fees, three-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-four. And there was a judgment with Avista that was seven-thousand-two-eighty-two. So, our total increase from last year's budget would be a hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seven-ninety-three in tax money. As you can see, our tax levy rate has decreased from last year by seventy-three cents. So, current projected is thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents for an annual five-hundred-thousand-dollar value, home value. We are the lowest taxing levy in the state for EMS services, and we're the third busiest in the state of Idaho. So, our proposed tax revenue, and this will be on a further slide, for our entire budget is four-thousand-ninety-one thousand...
Four million.
Four million, excuse me, ninety-one-thousand-five-hundred-forty-eight dollars. So, this is a breakdown of how we basically fund our budget. As you can tell from our budget, our total budget of twelve-million-eight-hundred-fifty-three-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-one dollars, that is revenue that we bring in from transporting patients. So, we bring in revenue collection from transporting patients from, as you can see below here, the Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross of Idaho, other commercial insurance and private pay. When we bill Medicare, an entire ambulance bill, and they vary from very basic costs of a few hundred dollars up to thousands of dollars depending on the care, on average, we're getting fifty-four percent back from what we're billing out to patients, which accounts to sixty-two percent of our calls is Medicare. Twelve percent of the calls that we run or respond on and transport patients is from Medicaid. We get an average of forty-three percent back from billables for those patients. Blue Cross is paying seventy-five percent, which is eight percent of our total call volume. Other commercial insurance is about thirteen percent, and we're getting paid about eighty-two percent of a bill. And then, private pay, people without insurance that are paying out of pocket, about five percent of our calls, and we get about twenty-one percent of that. And those, a lot of times, will go to collections in order to recapture some of that stuff. So, if you look at the top again, you can see that our ambulance revenue, just from transports, after our write-offs, which is the difference between what we're getting paid and what we're billing, we're writing off almost five million dollars. So, our projected ambulance revenue now is seven-million-nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars. And then, our bad debt write-offs, which basically takes care of those collections or people that are not going to pay, roughly is about five-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-two dollars, about five percent of our total transport. So, our total write-offs, after everything's billed off, writing off about forty-three percent of the money that was projected to come in from billing patients and their insurance. Next slide, please. Our focus this year on the capital replacement program is we are in need of purchasing five ambulances, three new ambulances, which we haven't done last year. Last year, we were just doing remounts and two remounts. The difference is, a remount is taking an old ambulance, taking the back of that box off and putting it on a new chassis. With that, we're saving anywhere between sixty-eight and eighty-two thousand dollars in the cost of a new ambulance. The reason for purchasing three new ambulances is the rural areas that we cover in Spirit Lake, Timberlake, and Worley have a lot of hard access or difficult access areas, and so we needed to find an ambulance in a configuration that was a little bit smaller platform, but still was able to accommodate all the equipment that we need and the personnel. And that was at a request of the chiefs of those districts, asking for us to figure out a way so that they can get around into these long driveways in some rural areas. And so, we came up with a new design. We had an ambulance committee of people who work on these ambulances to approve this design, and then we went forward and had some drawings and some, basically some changes made to those ambulances that will be able to function more effectively in those areas. The two remounts are, we've been doing since last year, and like I said, it saves us a lot of money in the turnaround time from a new ambulance to a remount. New ambulances are around eighteen months to two years, once you purchase it or sign the contract. A remount, once they receive the chassis, takes three months. So, it's a faster way for us to get some of these ambulances back on the road. The five Lucas devices you see there, we use Lucas devices. What it is, it's an automated mechanical CPR device, so that we can put it on a patient, and it will do consistent compressions at the rate and depth that is required, a national standard. It frees up people in the back of an ambulance from having to stand over a patient during transport for safety reasons, and it goes on quickly and it does a fantastic job. We currently have eleven of those in service. We're asking for five more, and we're looking at refurbished models, and those really were just demonstration models that were out in the, into fire districts that come back. They get refurbished to make sure that they're, they're good to use and that they're meeting the standards, and then they are maintained every year. And that is a cost savings per device of about, I think it was nine thousand dollars. So, it's pretty significant cost savings. We have two aging chief vehicles that will respond on calls, that we would like to replace with newer versions of Tahos. And then, we have one other truck that we want to put a shell on the back to use for supplies that we send out to different agencies, as well as a backup vehicle, and we can use it for mass casualty incident. We do need to replace one ambulance camera that we use that records not only the patient care area, but also the surrounding three-sixty view of what's happening in the ambulance while it's being operated. It does two things. One is if there's ever an accident, or there's ever something that happens in the back of the ambulance during patient care, or during an accident, we have full camera footage of that incident if needed. Doesn't happen very often, but we just need to replace those every so often to make sure that they're fully operational. We're requesting a four percent cost of living adjustment. That goes out to the fire agencies that we contract with. Typically, we try to keep up with the cost of living of three percent from what we get from our annual budget. This year, because we're saving money in other areas, we want to give them a little bit more money, and that's to kind of help, help offset the costs in adding some services to Coeur d'Alene, like I explained earlier. So, with that four percent, that'll cover those costs. Some other equipment that we're looking at, twenty Furno scoop boards, and basically what that is, is those will go on every ambulance that we own. And it's a two-piece board that separates, that you can slide under a patient to be able to lift them up, so you don't have to roll them or move them around as much as a backboard, and they're fully secured, and they can be lifted up and put onto a gurney. It's something that we have a version of it, but it's not as robust, and we found that these are better when we presented these to our providers. They like these, and they wanted to have these for the reasons of transporting patients and picking them off of floors and that type of thing. One thing that we're trying to do is just keep up with the normal safety devices and stuff in the back of our ambulances. So, there are some child restraints that go on our gurneys, because our gurneys are not designed for children and small infants, other than taking a car seat, which may or may not exist at the time. So, these child restraints will be able to go on our gurneys and secure infants all the way up into teenage size. We also are looking to upgrade our security cameras for the exterior of our building. We found we had some gaps in that system, and some of it was some police activity that happened outside of our, of our building. And when the Sheriff's Department came to see if they could get some camera footage, just wasn't covering the areas that was needed. Because we store medications and a lot of equipment and narcotics, we think it's important that we have a robust camera system, and the one we have is very outdated. Cradle points and MDTs for our chief vehicles. Those basically are the ability to monitor calls and track calls, get dispatched to calls, and the cradle point is basically a cell service for that MDT. And the MDT is just a mobile data computer or terminal in the chief vehicles. And then, the canopy for the truck is what I mentioned earlier, it's a shell that goes on the back of the truck, so we can secure items for mass casualty incidents, for taking supplies to stations that request, that need them if we don't have another way of getting it, because we have a support vehicle, but if that breaks down or something happens to it, we have no other way to get stuff to those stations. Next slide, please. We are asking for a four percent increase to our staff. We're basing this basically off of the Social Security Administration's, their last five years of what they're giving out to Social Security recipients, and just trying to kind of keep up with what the changes are from year to year. We're not always an equal, but as you can see, even if we do have that change, we're still at point-six percent difference of what the Social Security Administration is doing. The support tech that we have, he is reaching his three-year step, and that'll be a five percent increase based on the matrix that we have. We have a new accounting clerk that will meet her one-year step, which is a two-and-a-half percent raise. And then, we are planning on hiring a compliance and QA/HI officer to our staff, and that is something that's very badly needed. We have a lot of things that we need to make sure that we're being compliant with as far as HIPAA, contractual things, as well as our quality assurance and quality improvement program within the county, because we have over three-hundred-and-fifty providers in this county between paramedic and EMT and advanced EMT level, that we need to have these set in place so that we can continue making sure that we are providing the best care possible for the residents of Cooten County. Next, please. So, this is just a, basically an overview of what it is with our total anticipated revenue that we receive. So, our capital reserves, we're proposing increase two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-dollar-six-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Our tax revenue would be four-million-ninety-one-thousand-five-hundred-forty-eight. Our ambulance service revenue, which is what we would receive from billables going out, just under eight million dollars. We don't have any grants right now, there's a hold on some of the grants that we've applied for in the past. The Washington GEMT and the Idaho GEMT revenue, basically what GEMT is, is it's a program through the government that provides us an opportunity to receive back between fifty and eighty percent of Medicaid patients, between the, what we bill and what they're paying is they'll, they're willing to pay back between fifty and eighty percent of the difference to us. We pay, we pay for that service, it's about ten percent cost to be able to do that, but on average, we're receiving from patients from Washington about eighty thousand a year, and Idaho GEMT just began this year, and they're doing retroactive back to 2023, and we're anticipating about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars coming in from that money. That's money that was billed out and, and we haven't seen. So, we're going to go back basically to 2023 and then continue on from there. Our billing company takes care of that for us, along with a company that just works with GEMT revenue. And then, we have our impact fees, our contracts, and the contract that revenue right there is basically from the contract we have at Bonner County EMS, and that's to provide service between our districts from Cooten County and Bonner County. We're not anticipating using any impact fee revenue this year, but again, we can continue to save that money for future purchases if needed. And then, we are anticipating about thirty thousand dollars in interest from money that we have in the bank. So...
One minute.
Sorry.
One minute for expenses.
So, our service contracts is what we're paying out to the fire districts to staff the ambulances for us. And they're staffing the ambulances with firefighter EMTs and paramedics. You can see it's just over seven million dollars. Our bad debt write-off are the ones I talked about earlier, which is the, the people that go to collections are, they're private pay that typically don't pay. That's about how much we're going to write off. Our billing and collections contract, that is our billing company, that's how much we pay them every year to be able to bill patients for us and take care of all the collections, as well as our audits for Medicare, Medicaid, the GEMT program. And it's, it's a lot, it's high. However, if we were to take that same amount and add it to the amount of personnel we would need in our office, it would probably be three or four times that cost, because they have a robust team that just does ambulance billing for the majority of the western United States, and it's a big task, and we would have to hire at least four or five extra people in our office to do what we're paying them to do. So, it's a high number, but it actually is a cost savings for us because of the burden and the amount of money we'd have to pay in salaries. Our medical supplies roughly run us about four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars a year. We have had an increase in the past, it's been between three and five percent. Last year, we started hitting seven to eleven percent, and this year, we're hitting anywhere between twelve and in some cases forty-one percent in costs of medical supplies. So, along with that, some of the stuff we've done internally is to bring back some of those medical supplies, keep a really robust inventory of what this looks like and planning ahead when we see spike increases. Stuff that we use every day on a regular basis that does not expire in a two-year period of time. We've taken a lot of money and put it into that so that we have it on hand now, so that we don't have to pay the extra later on, especially with the tariffs and that type of thing. Personnel expenses, this is, this is salaries and burden, is one-million-eighty-five. As you can tell, it actually went down from last year. Barely, but that's also with the four percent cost of living. Education and training, we pay the fire districts, depending on if it's an ALS or BLS agency, we pay them a one-year dollar amount. It's to use towards their own education and training, because there are so many different agencies, and we don't have access to their training calendars and that type of thing. They basically spend that money and have to get it approved by us and what it's being used for. used for. And that's only for EMS and medical-related type of training. Our vehicle operation and maintenance, this is our fuel charges, our everything from oil changes, tires, that type of thing. This is how much we're paying every year, is $382,000. Our administrative costs and other expenses are just things that we do on a regular basis as far as everything from buying paper in the office and pens to other things that are going on that we need to operate every day. Our equipment and services, that's just normal equipment and maintaining equipment. And then our capital expenditures is $1,762,905. So as you can tell, our increase from last year's budget is just over $18,000 with all the proposals that we have in front of you. So our total request for this year's proposed budget is $12,622,951.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming out and giving us your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is item three. This is the Cootney County budget, and we have Brandy Falcon and Clerk Jennifer Locke here.
Yes, I just want to start off, I want to thank the clerks, employees in my clerk's office. Not only are we elections, district court recorder, county assistant and auditor, this budget process started back in March, and I just want to thank Brandy Falcon, our finance director, and Arrow Guinea, our senior budget accountant, with starting this process where we have to basically open the budget in the system and test it out, and then we have to send all the forms to the elected officials and all the revenues and expenses for the last two years. And then they get those requests back from all the elected officials. Brandy compiles all that data along with Arrow, and then has been presenting this budget information to you guys since basically, I would say, May and June. And now, here we are after all the adjustments. We're here to present our fiscal year '26 budget hearing tonight, and I want to also thank my chief deputy clerk, Grace. She's been very supportive in this process and with 105 employees that we have. She's just been very, I'm just very thankful to have her. So with that, I just want to thank my whole team and let Brandy present the budget from here.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, we are going to do a brief overview of the proposed 2026 Cootney County budget. So as we all know, our budget is comprised of requests from each of our nine elected officials.
Brandy, if I could, maybe just get you to speak up a little bit, because some folks in the audience may be having a hard time listening or hearing you.
So I said that the budget is made up of requests from each of our nine elected officials, and then this chart shows the various departments that fall under each elected official. And just to remind the board, the commissioners have a printed copy of this in front of them, so if there are some things that are difficult to see on the screen, you have it in front of you. And then this presentation is also on our county website for anyone who wants to download it themselves. So the total FY '26 proposed budget, starting on the left, is $144,950,461. Our budget is split into two primary sections. First, we have our general government portion of our budget, which is $119 million. And then we have solid waste on the far right, which is on its own, because it is an enterprise fund and it is self-supporting, and it operates like a business. And so their budget is $25 million proposed for next year. And then you can see below each section of the budget, the chart shows what portion of the budget is personnel expenses, operating, capital, or debt expenses. So you can see for general government, personnel is 74% of the budget, and operating is 20%, whereas solid waste, personnel for them is only 24%, and their operating and their capital budgets are much larger, because their operation is heavily driven by their capital and operations expenses. So this is a spreadsheet called the preliminary summary, and the commissioners are very familiar with this. This is our spreadsheet that we use all summer long during our budget deliberation meetings to calculate how close we are to balancing the budget. And so on the far right is the scenario with a 2.5% tax increase, and that is the budget that the commissioners did approve for publication. And then I've added additional scenarios to the left, if we were to take tax decreases instead of the 2.5. This is just...
I'm sorry, I just need to either the microphone a little closer, because people are still having a hard time hearing.
Should I just hold it next to my face?
That probably would be best, sorry, but...
This is our budget per elected official, including solid waste. And so on the left, you can see the budget per elected, and I do have solid waste broken out separately. So on the right, you can see that the sheriff is 36% of the county's budget, the B OCC is 22%, and then solid waste is 17%. However, if we don't include solid waste and we just look at the general governmental portion of the budget, the sheriff is 43% of the budget, the B OCC is 27%, and then the clerk is 10%. So these are some different challenges and opportunities that we dealt with this budget cycle. First of all, is the county's open positions. At the time the budget was approved, we had 65 open positions countywide. The three departments that have the highest number of openings are the jail, 911, and prosecutor. Notice, these are all justice-related services. Justice is difficult to staff, and it's a very expensive service to provide. So the jail had 18 openings, and out of 131 total positions, that's a 14% vacancy rate. 13 of those are detention deputies, four of them are custody technicians, one of them is a warrant records clerk. 911 had 11 open positions, and out of 34 total positions, that's a 32% vacancy rate. 10 of those were emergency communication officers, and one of those is a supervisor. And then the prosecutor had seven open positions, which at a 51, total 51 positions, that's a 14% vacancy rate, and that is five prosecutors, one secretary, and one intern. As always, something we have to deal with is competing with other local agencies for employees, especially in our public safety departments. And so it's always a balance of wanting to be competitive. However, getting into bidding wars with other agencies doesn't benefit taxpayers. And so we have to balance fiscal responsibility with also being a competitive employer. We also are budgeting for an increase to our health insurance. So the county is budgeting for an $890,000 increase to the health plan, and then we are additionally passing off $138,000 of increase. We're funding that by increasing employee deductions. So our total health plan budget is increasing by 7%. And we are just wrapping up the first full year of our PMR Concierge Medical Clinic for our employees and their families that are on our health insurance. So that's a really good benefit that we've had the last year for employees. And then also, we are budgeting for an 11% increase to our ICRAIM premium, which is And then, once again, as a reminder, public defense transitioned to under the state of Idaho in fiscal year '25. So in FY '25 and next year in FY '26, the only thing the county is paying for is the rent, utilities, and the janitorial expenses of the office space that department is located in. We are budgeting $5.5 million in interest revenue, and of that, we are using $2.68 million for ongoing costs. As an agency, we've just had to lean into some interest revenue in order to fund our rising expenses. And then our state revenues, we are budgeting sales tax at a 1.86% increase, which is an $83,000 increase, revenue sharing at 1.28% increase, which is a $111,000 increase, and then liquor is a 2% decrease, which is $80,000 of decrease, and that's based on discussions with the liquor board at the state. So these are the types of funds that we have in our budget. We have funds that are property tax-supported, such as the county's general fund, and then our justice fund. This is the largest special levy fund that the county has. And then we have a couple other funds that have statutory authority to levy. This would be liability insurance, which is ICRAIM, the airport, although we do not levy taxes for the airport, they are self-supporting. The county fair, which we are not levying taxes for this year. Noxious weeds, Panhandle Health, the Historical Society, Parks and Waterways, District Court, and then the revaluation fund. We also have funds that are self-supported through their own special revenue sources. So that would be the vessel fund, enhanced 911, snowmobile, and aquifer protection. And then, as I've mentioned, we have our enterprise fund, which is solid waste. So over on the right, you can see that the justice fund is 40% of the county's budget, and the current expense or the general fund is 24% of the county's budget. So moving into expenses, in terms of personnel, the board has approved a 2.5% cost of living adjustment, also referred to as a COLA, for a total cost of $1.7 million. That does not include the elected officials, so the elected official wages will stay the same next year. The board's also agreed to fund step progressions for all employees in good standing for a total loaded cost of $704,000. And the average increase for a step ranges between 2% and 5%, depending on where the employee is at on the matrix. And as a reminder, Cootney County does their steps prorated, so the employees get their step on their anniversary date. So an employee might wait until July or August of next year until they see that increase. Those employees do not get that raise right at the beginning of the year. And then we've also budgeted some savings by cutting some of our open positions that have been open longer than 100 days. So budget savings is $1.3 million, and we cut 29 positions by 50%. Last year, we cut 41 positions by 50%, and the savings last year was $1.9 million. So you can see that from last year to this year, we have fewer positions that have been open that long, and so we are, it seems, slowly filling those positions that have been open a long time, which is good. And of the 29 positions that we cut, 22 were in the sheriff's office, three in the assessor's office, one in the treasurer's office, and three in the prosecutor's office. So in terms of requests that the board received from departments, there were 29 requests submitted for new positions for a total of $2.2 million. The board ended approving 15 of these requests, which was a total of 12.5 FTEs, for a total cost of $1 million. The positions that were approved for solid waste do not have an impact on property taxes. And then the board received 54 requests for changes to existing positions for a total loaded savings of $319,000. The board only approved 45 of those requests for a total budget savings of $293,000. So this is a snapshot of the increase in personnel budgets per elected official from 2025 to 2026. So the change on the far right is going to be reflective of the increase due to the COLA, personnel requests, steps, and then any FY '25 mid-year changes, the largest of which is the employee steps that employees get this year that automatically increases their base pay next year. And then the board, under their budget, carries the amount for health insurance and for the mid-year pool, so I've broken those out separately to show the true increase for the board. And then, just as a reminder, fiscal year '25 is when public defense went to the state, and so the B OCC's personnel budget did go down significantly in '25. So this is operating expense, which is also our B budget. Again, this shows the change per elected official from 2025 to 2026. So general governmental budget increased $689,000, and solid waste increased $402,000. I just want to point out some of the larger changes. The assessor and the treasurer's budget decreases are due to reductions in their consultant and software-type contracts with XTR. The B OCC is increasing primarily due to the increase in aquifer protection district of $228,000. But as a reminder, that is not an increase to tax, since aquifer protection is self-funded through their parcel fees and their fund balance. So it does show up as a budget increase, but that's not necessarily meaning it's an increase to tax. And the board also does have an increase, as I said, to the ICRAIM insurance premium of $140,000. And then the primary driver for the increase in the sheriff's B budget is the $1.3 million increase to the contract for medical services for inmates in the jail. So these are capital expenses, which capital expenses are non-recurring, one-time projects, so they can vary greatly from year to year. General government capital budget is increasing $3.1 million, and then solid waste's capital budget is also increasing $3.1 million. The main driver for the B OCC's increase is a $667,000 capital project for renovation and rehab of elevators. And then the clerk's capital request is a request from elections, and it is funded with assigned fund balance and not with property tax dollars. And then, this is new this year, we now have a budget classification. It's called debt, but technically, the county does not have any bonded indebtedness, but there's a new accounting rule that leases and software agreements need to be reported under the debt classification in our financials, and so we're now budgeting those expenses in the debt classification as well. And so this, there is $927,000 budgeted for next year, and once again, that is all leases and software agreements. This is the total budget change from the FY '25 adopted budget. So you can see the general governmental portion of the budget is increasing $9.3 million, solid waste is increasing $3.9 million. And I just went through all the budget increases for A, B, C, and D budget that total that $9.3 million. This is a snapshot of our enterprise fund, which is solid waste. As I said, they're self-funded through their fees and fund balance usage. So on the left is their FY '25 expenses and revenues, and then on the right is the FY ' '26. So you can see their budget's increasing from $21 million to $25 million. That large negative number at the bottom, those are payments that solid waste makes to internal county departments to pay them for services we provide solid waste. So for example, solid waste actually pays the auditor's office for the work we do on solid waste. And so in FY '26, that's $992,000, so that's $992,000 savings in property tax for other county departments because of the money solid waste pays them. This is showing how we calculate our property tax. So at the top, we start with our property tax base of $62 million. We add in the percentage increase, which right now is budgeted at 2.5%, our new construction, our annexation, URDs, and then we have to take out the property tax replacement dollars that we get from the state of Idaho, and that gives us our total levy amount of $64,398,070. Since the board is taking less than the allowable 3% increase, that means there's $310,000 of levy forgone, so that is tax revenue the board has the legal authority to take, but they chose not to. So that is money that we will not be collecting. And then we have a one-time levy of $299,000 to recapture property tax dollars the county did not receive last year due to lawsuits between the state of Idaho and some large utility companies. On the right, this graph shows the percentage of property tax that goes to each of our tax-supported funds. Obviously, the justice fund gets the majority of our tax revenues at 59%, so that means for every dollar in tax that is paid, 59 cents goes to the justice fund. The next largest is the general fund at 16%, and then next would be the district court fund at 13%. So total revenues equal expenses, $144 million, and then property tax is $64.4 million. State funds and other fees is $69 million, fund balance revenue is $10.8 million, and then grant-funded personnel revenue is $785,000. So property tax is 44% of budgeted revenues, state funds and other fees is 48% of budgeted revenues, fund balance is 7%. This is a comparison of property tax versus non-property tax revenues year over year. So our property tax amount is increasing $2.8 million, non-property tax revenues are increasing $10.4 million. The main drivers for the increase in the non-tax revenues is a $2.5 million increase in fund balance usage, a $1 million increase in interest revenue, a $1 million increase in prisoner housing revenue, a $3.9 million increase in solid waste revenues, and then the remainder of the increase is due to fee increases in community development and DMV, as well as other small increases across departments in the county. So the dark green is property tax revenues, and the gray is non-tax revenues, starting on the far left in FY '23 and going to the right to FY '26. So you can see every year, the non-tax revenues do outpace property tax revenues, and then at the bottom, you can see the percentages year over year. This is a similar graph, however, with it's... This is a similar graph, however, with, it's with our expenses. So, we have our A, B, C, D, and D budgets here, which is Personnel, Operating, Capital, and Debt. So, you can see the growth in each budget category year over year. And as a reminder, in FY25, you can see from FY24 to FY25, Personnel costs only increased about four-hundred thousand dollars, and that's because in FY25, we lost all of Public Defense, so we had a big actual reduction in Personnel expenses due to that. So, looking forward to next year, the ongoing, the annual loaded salary cost for the county for FY26 is ninety-two-point-two million dollars. And when I say loaded salary, that means the cost of the wages we pay the employee, plus the cost we pay for taxes and workers' comp and health insurance and Percy, which we are required by law to pay Percy. We don't have a choice. And then, the savings that we have from our open positions, we cut twenty-nine positions by fifty percent, so the budget savings from those is one-point-three million dollars. And then, this is just a list of our large capital projects that we have in process right now. These are not in the budget. They get treated as capital carryforwards from year to year, once they are completed. Since they're in the current FY25 budget, unspent funds will roll forward to next year. So, in conclusion, as I've said, the total property tax amount for FY26's budget is sixty-four million, three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, seventy dollars, and that's forty-four percent of Cootney County's anticipated revenues. We're still, we're always cognizant of the amount of open positions we have and where our Personnel staffing levels are at, and Personnel is the largest factor in our budget at sixty, sixty-five percent. We continue to have healthy fund balance reserves. We have three months sitting in our emergency fund right now of operating expenses, and we have been able to benefit taxpayers by rolling previous-year savings into fund balance and using those savings to pay for capital projects, instead of asking for additional funds to fund a lot of the capital improvements that we have going on as a county. We continue to be debt-free, and the Auditor's Office and the county have been awarded for outstanding financial reporting since 2012 from the Government Finance Officers Association. And lastly, this link to our website is where this presentation and all of our other budget information and and financial reporting can be viewed. So, I'll turn it back to the Board for any questions or discussion or direction that you want to give.
Well, thank you for that outstanding presentation. I very much appreciate it. Are there any questions by anyone up here on the Board? I would propose that if you wanted to make some adjustments, because there are some things we need to talk about, we could do that now. Is there anything that any one of you would like to bring up?
I have a couple of things, but Mark, did you want to go first? There's two things in particular that I would like moved from the budget to, well, I don't know, is it premature? We need to talk about Hayden first, or does that matter?
It's up to you guys, in whatever order you want to discuss things.
Commissioner Duncan, did you want to talk about Hayden?
We can do that now or after. I only have two little things.
Okay, because I, maybe I should discuss the issue with the Hayden contract first?
Sure.
And then that might first.
No, it's totally fine.
Okay. So, we, the Board got notice from the City of Hayden that they had allocated a million, forty-nine thousand for law enforcement services. And there was a, a statement in there that said something about our existing contract renews at the beginning of the fiscal year. And I don't know if, excuse me, if he thought that it was supposed to auto-renew or something, but there's a clause in this contract, and we do not have an agreement with the City of Hayden. But the very last page of it is a supplemental terms, and it is the only page in this contract that talks about payment for services. And in this document, it says explicitly that the, this agreement, it'll, these supplemental terms expire on September thirty, 2025, unless extended or modified in writing by both part, uh, parties. Now, I don't know why the city would think that they have a, a contract with us, because it does not automatically renew. It's the only place in the contract that talks about payment. And, you know, the contract is a quid pro quo, quote, contract, which means that there's something for something. And if there's no dollar amounts established in the contract, then it's not a contract, because there's, there's nothing saying what the, what we're supposed to get paid for. And because we don't have a contract, I would recommend that all items that we have allocated to the City of Hayden's contract, we move that from the Sheriff's Office into the General Fund for, for Patrol. And at that point, we have not appropriated any money for this contract. We do not have a contract with the city. It expires at the end of September, and that if we should enter into another contract with them, we can make the adjustment in the budget process, and I, and, and Counsel has already said, in my opinion, the attached contract, the law enforcement services, which terminates on September thirtieth, it, it does not extend unless modified in writing by both parties. And so, Brandy, I was going to ask what your recommendation would be on something like that, if we went down that pathway?
So, it's very possible that we can just move all of the expenses we currently have budgeted for the City of Hayden, dedicated law enforcement.
Can you just speak up a little? Sorry.
Okay, so, all of the, all of the expenses we have budgeted for dedicated law enforcement services to the City of Hayden, we can transfer those to the Sheriff's regular patrol budget, and that way, we will have no budget appropriations for the City of Hayden for FY26. So, it's very possible, quite easy to do, if that's what the Board wants to do.
And then, we can make the adjustment afterwards.
Yes, so, subsequent to budget adoption.
If we do enter into a contract.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's something before this Board, and in speaking with Counsel, it was their recommendation that we do that as an added measure, in case there is some sort of a dispute, and they claim that this thing does auto-renew. But the, this agreement has some conflicting terms in it, and typically, again, according to Counsel, the supplemental terms prevail over any other terms, and is the only place that it talks about payment. And it says explicitly, it, it ends on September thirty, 2025, and cannot extend unless both parties agree in writing. So, I would recommend that this Board move any appropriated items that we have in the Hayden contract into the accounts that Brandy had suggested.
I've got a question. How many pack taxpayer dollars outside of Hayden will be needed to subsidize Hayden law enforcement due to lack of funding?
Well, I, I would propose that, because we have a rate established by the auditing department, that whatever dollars the city pays us, we will deliver that service at cost. That they know, they have known for years that they've been getting a fantastic deal from the county. They know they've been getting significantly more service than what they've been paying for. And there's a couple of problems if, to continue this arrangement. The first one is that we're entered into a contract with a county citizen, the entire county is subsidizing a portion of Hayden's law enforcement. The other part of this is that we have set a rate for Hayden, and so if another city wants to enter into a contract with the county, are we obligated to, to enter into that contract at a lower rate that costs us money? And I would argue, no. We should have one rate, we can't make a profit, and that we charge what it costs, and the cities, you know, the good news for the cities, and it's their prerogative to start their own police department. And typically, with a small agency, it's much more cost-effective to engage in a contract with the, the Sheriff's Office than it is to start your own police department. And if you can see what's going on in Quarter Lane with the arbitration, I believe, that the Police Department is trying to enter into with the city for additional funds, more salary requests, requirements, demands, I think it's a good deal for the, any city to get into a contract with the Sheriff's Office. So, I would propose that whatever we do, we have a set rate by the auditing department, and that is the rate for a deputy, and the city proposes how much they want to pay us. They've set a million, forty-nine thousand, and we deliver exactly that amount of service to them.
Even though it's not enough, according to them?
What do you mean, not enough according to them?
Well, there's more dollars than that, besides a million, forty-nine thousand dollars. It's going to cost more than that.
Well, that depends on how many deputies we dedicate to that. You know, they've been, I, I don't recall offhand what the most recent proposal was. Was it nine or ten deputies that they were asking for?
So, the three contract options the Board sent to the City of Hayden, the, the full proposal with the highest number of staff had eight deputies, an average-cost detective, and a lieutenant. So, that's ten bodies, eight deputies.
And I think that came out to about one-point...
Almost one-point-three million, just for all of those staff wages.
But the total amount that we came up with, and I'm put you on the spot here.
Are you asking for including overhead costs?
Yes, because that is what has not been included.
Yes. So, if you were to take the one-point, almost one-point-three million of the Personnel costs, and add forty percent overhead rate, the total contract would be one-point-eight million dollars.
And that forty percent was an incentive to get out of the car dealership business that we were in, where we were buying cars, right? This, this, this current year, we bought two cars in the contract. They have not been put into service yet, and we're using county vehicles, depreciating county vehicles, so that we can give the city two brand-new cars at the end of their contract. And so, I would propose to the Board that we prorate these vehicles into the contract and get out of the business of buying and selling cars to cities.
It's funny, when I was at the airshow, I started talking to people, you know, what do you think about the City of Hayden? Just kind of floating things through, and everybody else in the rest of the county is going to be picking up the tab. How many people do you think said that was a good idea?
I would suspect, I would suspect none in the city, uh, none outside of the City of Hayden.
That's right.
Yes. So, if the Board agrees with the recommendation, and, and Counsel has agreed to this, to move these deputies out of, and all of the Sheriff's Office expenses out of the Hayden contract and back into the Sheriff's Office general, I guess, patrol budget, then Brandy would have direction for that.
I have a couple things. First of all, I don't think this Board has ever had a presentation on the methodology of how the overhead numbers have come into effect. And I know that some of the detail in the three options that we gave them, I, I want to say that was multiple cars, but they were only given credit for eighty thousand dollars. So, I think there's some, some things that need to be fully explored and explained when we're talking about that. So, I guess my question is, if we move all of the stuff from the Hayden contract into the, the Patrol, are we going to be a million dollars short in our budget?
So, we would move all of the Hayden dedicated resources back into the Patrol budget. We would cut all of the Hayden revenue. We would cut the lieutenant. We would cut the new car for the lieutenant. So, we would end up needing to lean into fund balance for just over a million dollars. However, subsequent to budget adoption, if you do enter into a contract with the City of Hayden, we'll put the fund balance back and replace it with revenue from the contract from the City of Hayden. If that doesn't happen, I am confident we will have enough unanticipated revenues to cover that million dollars. Last year, as the Board knows, we returned thirteen million dollars to fund balance, and so I'm confident that for one year, we would be okay looking to those unanticipated revenues to cover that fund balance usage.
So, contract by budget adoption, that'd be Friday.
No, I mean, subsequent to budget adoption, like you adopt the budget using the million in fund balance. In a month or so, in theory, you come to an agreement, you sign a contract, I'll do a budget amendment, and I'll put the fund balance back, and I'll replace it with contract revenue from the City of Hayden.
So, alongside negotiating that contract with Hayden, could we, could we have a presentation on the overhead?
I did, I did present it in one of, in a budget meeting earlier, but perhaps I didn't do enough detail, so I'm happy to do it again.
Yeah. And just as additional information, the Sheriff and Brandy sat down and went through where the, those additional overhead dollars came from, as well as we provided that to the City of Hayden to challenge, to say, look, is, is there something wrong here? And did they ever respond to you after you gave them those figures?
No. Yes, I went through it with the Sheriff's Office, and then I also sent it to the City of Hayden. I didn't ever receive feedback on, uh, specific questions or objections to the method. I did send it in Excel, so they could see all, I mean, they could see all the backup data behind it, you know, line by line, what, exactly what expenses I was using, how many employees I was using to prorate the expense per deputy, all of that stuff.
Okay. So, anyhow, that is a recommendation before the Board, and I would encourage that as well, just as an additional measure of, just showing that we're not appropriating for this until we get a contract, that we can agree upon, that makes sense for both parties.
Does Leslie want to look at that?
Oh, did you want to look at this?
No, that, that paper.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm familiar with many of those numbers. The published amount, I believe, was one-point-three-nine million, and what ultimately was presented to us just this afternoon was one million, forty-nine thousand.
Correct.
It really fluctuated.
We published our budget anticipating one million, three-hundred-and-ninety thousand in revenue from the City of Hayden, because that is what they had on their website when they voted to publish their budget, and so, we just matched it.
Yeah. So, and, you know, just as well, I don't know why people are talking about how the county, you know, me, whoever, wants to get three or four million dollars out of the City of Hayden. We can't, I can't, we can't, cannot make the city pay us three million. All we can do is offer a service, like on a menu, here's the cost of that service, and you just buy what you want to buy, and that's it. There is no intention, and there is no ability to try to make anybody pay more than what they want to pay for the service that they're going to get. The problem is, is that we create an inequity when the county subsidizes law enforcement for one city, which has their own growth trajectory, doesn't take into account the cost of that law enforcement. It's established that urban areas have fifty percent higher crime than rural areas. The county is rural. The cities are urban. They just have higher crime due to the density. And so, I believe, as a county-elected official, we should look out for every county citizen when it comes to the money they pay into the Justice Fund and ensuring that they are getting a service from the money that, for all intents and purposes, we're taking. We're accepting it, we're taking it, and we have to show that we're delivering a service with it.
As long as it's just a bucket moving, like I'm actually going to suggest a bucket move here in a minute, or two other items, then I, I don't really see an issue with that.
Okay.
And are you okay also cutting the lieutenant and the vehicle for the lieutenant from the budget as well?
Again, they could come back and say, we want one lieutenant and one officer, and if they're paying for that amount, we would be able to, to do that. So, that, I, I don't have an, an issue with cutting it from our budget. We, we don't have the money right now.
Correct.
So...
Are you good with that, Commissioner Arbeloa? I mean, basically, we've been told that we're going to get about three-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars less than what was originally kind of stated, and we can't put these positions in here and have a balanced budget.
I think it'd behooves Hayden to choke up some more cash, because everybody else in the county is going to have to suck up the...
Well, for the level of service that they've suggested they want, I would agree with you, but if they can't, then it's a lower level of service.
Yes.
So, in order to get through tonight and get the budget balanced, I, I would recommend, and I think Commissioner Duncan is of the same opinion, that we remove these positions. If the revenue, looks like the revenue will come in to pay for it, we can add them back in later.
Yeah, what's that old saying, pay to play?
I, I would just restate, though, that the county does benefit from the City of Hayden, what they do pay from law enforcement. So, we wouldn't have those bodies on the street if we didn't have the Hayden contract. So, that helps. That is helpful in general.
Yeah. You know, from an abstract perspective, you know, you can make that argument. The problem is that when you look at a map of the county, and you divide it up by districts, you know, they'll tend to congregate in one district, because there's just more calls for service, because it's a dense... because it's a denser area. And, you know, it would be a lot easier if cities, uh, uh, incorporated the cost of that growth every time they add another apartment complex, add a zero-lot line development, add a big-box retailer. I, I mean, the cities can ask, ask some of these, uh, big-box retailers that draw law enforcement services to help pay for that, and they don't. And, uh, I think it's only fair, 'cause we certainly don't have any say over those growth decisions. And that, I think, is the, the pickle that the county board finds itself in, and even the sheriff's office, because they don't have any say over it. And I think it's time that we come up with a, a, a true measure of service for what your justice fund gets for that person in Whirly, the person, you know, in the rural part of the county. What are they getting? And then, the cities should pay for that premium above that bare-level minimum of service. And, and, and we just sell it at cost, we're, we're, there's no profit here.
Right, I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but again, it is a shared service. So, I benefit as being unincorporated county from additional Hayden deputies.
Well, if you're close to Hayden, yes, but if you live way down south, you know, in the bottom southwest corner of, uh, the, uh, the county, uh, maybe just north of the reservation, you may not get service for hours, if not days.
Except if the fact the person who was in my area is now down in Whirly, and then I get the Hayden deputy to respond to my area. So, I think, to me, what I need is true, if it's divided by districts, calls for service per district. I think we need a lot more metrics to determine like-for-like services. Because if we're gonna charge Hayden and say that Hayden needs so many deputies per thousand, I wanna make sure that it's an apples-to-apples comparison about how many deputies are in the unincorporated area versus calls for service.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more on the metrics. We do, we do need that, uh, with the understanding that typically, urban areas have more crime uh, than rural areas, and so, uh, on a per capita basis, not just, you know, uh...
I don't disagree, but it's hard for me to just put a line in the sand with numbers to say, "We can't tell you what the stats are, we can't tell you what the calls for service are, we can't tell you any of this, but this is what we're saying that you have to have."
I agree completely, and we should not be entering into contracts where we make those promises either, if we can't provide that, the level of detail. So, um, Commissioner Eberlein, are you in agreement with, uh, removing the lieutenant and the car, and then also, uh, moving the deputies that are allocated in, the sheriff's office expenses allocated to the Hayden contract, moving it outside?
I'm not gonna twist my arm.
All right.
So, I do just have a question, what is the downside of doing that?
Well, the attorneys are a lot smarter than me, so I'm happy to follow that course of action. I can't really think of a downside, um, honestly. It's just shifting resources from one budget to another so that we appropriate $0 for the city of Hayden. Um, I mean, it's unfortunate to have to cut all of the revenue from the Hayden contract, but, um, you know, I'm the ci, I'm the county finance director, not the Hayden finance director, and so, it is what it is. And like I explained earlier, um, I don't have a problem using the fund balance to cover the million-dollar difference or unanticipated revenues if the commissioners are unsuccessful in negotiating a contract with the city subsequent to budget adoption.
And then what if it falls through?
If it falls through, then we have to rely on unanticipated revenues.
Guess that's the risk we take.
Yep. Okay, well, you have direction on that. Uh, Commissioner Duncan, did you, uh, have some additional items that you wanted to address?
I do, um, there's two items, uh, in the budget that I, I do not wanna pull out of the budget. I just wanna put it into the, um, I don't know that we need to go back to that slide, Brandy. But right now, uh, and now that the Hayden contracts, we're gonna have to redo some numbers here. But if added 2.5% increase, it shows that we would have 190,000 in a, a mid-year pool. We're not gonna have that anymore because of the Hayden contract, so we're down to pretty much breaking even at 2.5%. But what I'd like to do is take, um, the sheriff's longevity and the commercial appraisal, appraiser one, those two items, and put them in the mid-year pool, only temporarily until we have presentations to fully explain, um, the ramifications of those two items, if that makes sense. So, all they're doing is going from, essentially, we're doing the same thing with Hayden, putting it into the sheriff's bucket, we're taking it, take it from sheriff's bucket and assessor's bucket, put it into the mid-year pool bucket, and then have those presentations. But for adoption, I, I would ask those two things.
Brandy, how, is that, uh, very reasonable and doesn't really affect operations?
It's budget neutral, um, we're just moving the funding from the assessor and the sheriff's budget to the board. Um, and we would cut those requests for new positions, but with the funding would be under the board. So, the board could come back again after budget adoption, and... So, after budget adoption, you could decide you do want to add an appraiser, and you do want to implement longevity pay. We would just move the funding into their budgets.
Okay, Commissioner Eberlein, how's that?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, you got direction?
And then, uh, just one more thing, um, during this year, I would like, um, to concentrate on, uh, the prosecuting attorney matrix and the 911 matrix to make sure that we're not missing anything and that we're able to continue to attract and retain, um, folks in those two divisions.
And so, would that be a budget-neutral?
Yes, because it'd be for FY '27, we'd make those changes there. Unless we have a budget-neutral solution, we can implement, uh, mid-year.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, we're always facing those issues, so it's hard to anticipate. There's no crystal ball to tell us what will happen, so I, I'm fine always addressing those issues uh, to ensure that public safety has what it needs to do its job. And with the prosecutor's office down five prosecutors, um, that's pretty significant, so...
And who knows, he might drive it down the, uh, road, and he might get killed by a car.
Well, we hope not, but yes, I understand, um, okay, so I guess you have direction.
Thank you, and then I did have a follow-up question. Commissioner Eberlein had said he wanted to cut the $24,000 for the LPR. Was there another commissioner that also wanted to give that direction, um, to make that budget cut?
Well, Commissioner Duncan proposed to remove it, so I would, I would suspect that you have to on that.
Okay, so I'll add that to my budget direction to cut that from the budget before Friday.
Yes.
Okay.
Where does that put us with a cushion at this point?
Uh, there is no cushion because of having to cut the Hayden revenue.
Okay, so we're pretty much net, uh...
You're gonna have to stay at 2.5% tax increase, is that where you, where you were going?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so is there anything else that, uh, either of you wanna bring up?
There might be something in deliberations, but right now, that's the only thing on my list.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Fine, I'm done.
All right, well, we're gonna go into, uh, public testimony, but before we do, uh, I'm gonna, uh, recommend that we take a 10-minute recess. Uh, is that okay? So, it's, uh, 7:29, we're gonna take 10 minutes, we'll be back at 7:39, thank you.
Okay, it's 7:47. We were back from recess. It took a little longer because we had some technical difficulties. The next section is public testimony. Now, for those of you who may have gotten in here late or didn't quite catch it, the license plate readers were removed out of the budget. The funding for that was removed out of the budget. Now, I do have just a quick statement and then we'll start calling people up to make comment. This part of the meeting is so the public can be heard. Everyone speaking will be allotted three minutes. So if you have not completed one of these cards, please go ahead and complete one. Excuse me. And when you speak, please address the board and only the board. And again, I'd like to remind people to refrain from clapping and making excessive noise that could be disruptive. And instead, just please raise your hands if you agree with the speaker. And I can assure you that your support of any comments made will be duly noted by this board. So, thank you. So we will begin with, is it Lubah Wald? Is, oh, it's a written comment only and it's on the back, so I'll read it in. "I am protesting ALPRs as an encroachment on our privacy rights. Stop the surveillance of innocent citizens." Victoria Baumann, written comment. "I do not want license plate readers." Thank you. Karen Thelmly, is Karen here?
Yes.
It says you would wish to speak. You come up to the podium and just test the microphone to make sure people can hear you.
I had a couple of questions and is that allowed during the talk time?
Yes.
In the beginning, you made the distinguishment between being allowed in the budget, but it may be, it can be approved later. So are what you're saying, it will not be in the budget at any time or approved at any time?
It's not in the budget that we are looking at approving for FY '26. But like I mentioned earlier, something can be in the budget and it's not authorized to expend, meaning it comes back before the board and we say, you know, even though we put the funds aside for it, we're just not going to enter into the agreement or expend those funds. Conversely, those funds may not be in the budget, and this has happened before where unexpected expenses come up, and the board at its discretion can allocate funds either from savings that have occurred throughout the budget year or through fund balance, which is in essence the savings account for the county.
And when that happens, is it made public for the commissioners' meeting?
Always.
Good. Yeah, I'm totally against it. And I wonder, why is it so hard to find information on how this was going to be presented? It was hard for me to find anything online about this tonight happening here.
You mean with respect to the license plate readers? Well, that's because it's not a line item. It's part of the overall budget discussion. And so commissioners brought it up and we can talk about it because it falls within the budget. It's $144 million budget. There's, what, thousands of line items, so we couldn't possibly list them all.
Yes. Well, I just think surveillance of law-abiding citizens is wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Michael, is it Barnes? Come on up. Burns, forgive me. And you have three minutes.
I just want to say, I'm glad it's not in the budget, the license plate readers. To me, this represents unwarranted surveillance of citizens. And we all know that at the federal and state level, they are building a surveillance state. I don't want that for my kids or grandkids, and I hope you don't either. And lastly, I would like to say, if this issue is so important and this is such a good thing, why isn't the sheriff here? Instead, he sends his armed deputies, but he should be here to defend this and to tell the citizens why it's so damn good. Because as far as I can tell, from previous evidence, okay, good, he's here. Good. I don't, I don't see that many citizens that support this.
Yeah, well, the sheriff is here and
Good, I'm glad he is.
And this is not a public hearing for the sheriff to make the case. This is a public hearing for the board to decide on the budget. And so it's the board's discussion about whether or not that line item remains in the budget. So that's why you're not here.
All right. Well, I don't believe this is constitutional and, and I don't think it's something that you all should be including in the budget, and I'm glad it's not.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay. And, and just one last word. I would hope in the future that if you consider things like this, that this would be a cause for the citizens to send a commissioner out of office for supporting something like this.
Yeah, and when you say "you," do you refer to all of the board or?
All of the board.
Yeah.
All of the board.
Yeah, okay.
Any commissioner that would support something like this. Okay? And again, I have children and grandchildren. I want them to inherit the freedoms that I've enjoyed and that are slowly being eroded at the state and federal level.
Yeah, they're also being eroded at the local level.
That's, that's true. That's true. And that's why I am here tonight.
Yeah. And let me explain too, the cities have, they have this, this technology on their cars. They have this technology where they're stationary throughout the city. They have little trailers that they can roam around the city and take pictures there too. And I've emphasized this all along, that, you know, it doesn't begin or end at the county, but it really is an all-encompassing
One last word. This stuff is often sold under the, the fallacy that this is for the safety of citizens. If, if safety is our ultimate goal, we can find that in a state penitentiary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Okay, next up is Daniel, is it Owlsley? And he wishes to speak. Thank you.
I also brought a hand up for you.
And then do you need this right into the record or?
No.
Okay, because we all three got it.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Owlsley, you have three minutes.
All right. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm, I'm requesting that you vote no on the automated license plate readers.
And we did, the board did.
Yep. As, as I said in my earlier email, there are significant security issues with this implementation. The operating systems involved have some significant issues. They also have some of the highest known security vulnerabilities so far in 2025. In addition to insecure operating systems, one of the, one of the systems, Microsoft, which is running Azure where this implementation would take place, was recently caught using what, what is called a digital escort system. Digital escort system allows them to bring in, and they were actually doing this, Chinese nationals to manage the Department of Defense systems for approximately 10 years before they got caught doing it. A digital escort is supposed to monitor the person doing the work, but if they were actually highly skilled, they wouldn't be monitoring the person, they would be doing the work. And if Microsoft was doing this for the Department of Defense, why would we think that they wouldn't do it for an implementation in Azure? In addition to these security issues, the most recent CrowdStrike hacking report is out, and that's what I gave you here, just a slide from that. As you can see on the slide, there are more than 265 criminal and nation-state hacking groups that are being currently tracked. Government is targeting, government targeting by nation-state hackers has increased by 185 percent, and cloud implementation attacks specifically by nation-state hackers have increased by 136 percent. To put this in CrowdStrike's terms, you, me, all of us, we are the hunted right now. This ultimately really isn't about this sheriff or about this sheriff's department. In fact, we care a great deal about this sheriff's department. Ultimately, what it comes down to is this is not a tool that any law enforcement organization should have, just as you mentioned with the cities, just as you mentioned with other groups. This is not a tool that any law enforcement should have. As I have seen in many years of working with state and federal government organizations, what was intended as a cost-saving measure or a safety measure can quickly become a point of authoritarian control. The usage and retention guidelines can and will be changed to become more authoritarian. This is a progression that I have actually seen many times in my personal job. When we talk about bulk data collection, this is nothing compared to what the social media companies are actually doing. However, we choose to sign up to participate in social media. We choose to run around with cell phones. We choose to install apps on our phones that allow us to be tracked. When a government organization starts collecting data in bulk, like the automated license plate readers, it is a violation of the Fourth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. At the end of the day, the most important reason to vote no on the automated license plate readers is it turns the concept of innocent until proven guilty on its head. When there's a crime and law enforcement starts their investigation, they start gathering data and information.
Mr. Owlsley, I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
Okay. To put it another way, the innocent who have committed no crime are now being surveilled by the government. This is a direct violation of the agreement between the citizens of this country and their government as outlined in the Constitution. To quote Thomas Jefferson, "I prefer dangerous freedom over peaceful slavery." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elsa Owlsley. Did you want to speak?
Just a couple of things. Thank you so much for removing it for, from the budget, but the purpose of being here even after that announcement was made is that in case it comes back, I just, we want to be a resource of information. If you guys need more information, we're not here to attack the, the good intentions behind it. We love our, our law enforcement officers, there's no doubt about that. And the last thing I would ask is, about three weeks ago, we had sent in an email to all three of you, and I want to make sure that that goes in the record because my husband does this for a living and there was additional resources there that you guys could take advantage of and read it. I didn't bring my glasses, so I can't read it for you, but I don't know how that works out.
We don't necessarily have to read it word for word into the record, but it is, all three of us have received it, so it is a public record.
And we'll add it to the packet of information for tonight.
And so that if the public wants to see it, there's some really good links there. Again, whoever decides to install apps, then it's really, some of them are really foolish and, and I understand that, but they have the decision to do that. And with this, it feels like we have no choice. That's the objection. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Summer Bushnell, wishes to speak.
Summer Bushnell, Post Falls resident. My first comment would be, I understand we're coming with the sheriff contracts, but don't punish Hayden residents for their stupidity of most of their elected officials. but don't punish Hayden residents for this stupidity of most of their elected officials. Some of them aren't going to be happy that I said that live. I think you could have license plate readers, and I've said this to the Motorola guy and other things. I'm gonna repeat myself again, but you need to have a clause that says no data goes out of the county. You need to have a clause that says there's no data shared.
I'm sorry, but, please.
I know you don't agree, I don't care. The contract should say no data sharing with the federal government. And I know that one of the three of you had said something about having in the contract that the data is erased after a set amount of time and have an outside company verify that. I think if you could get those conditions back, you would have a lot more agreeable. As far as I know, the, the contract I had read earlier this year doesn't have any of that. So I'm glad that it got taken out of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Linda Cook. She wishes to speak. Come on down.
I just would like to thank all of you for removing that from the budget. I think you do have a clear picture of the resolve that you'll be met with in terms of surveillance of people just say, going to North Forty to buy chicken medicine, it's nobody's business. It's not law enforcement business. But I do understand that you are not careless with officer safety. That's a canard that people will not fall for because that's not what this issue is about. It speaks directly to the Constitution and to the right of privacy guaranteed therein. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Rochelle Edison. Come on down.
In addition to agreeing with other comments against the ALPRs, I'm here to urge you to always remember that this is Idaho, America. So we're like America squared. We don't give away our rights for a false sense of security or even real security. I support law enforcement, but if the cure is worse than the disease, it is not the right solution. I'll quote the Institute for Justice lawyer, Michael Soifer. "The Fourth Amendment problems with this unregulated mass surveillance are only getting worse as communities around the county, uh, coun- probably was country, begin using ALPRs or expand their existing surveillance networks. Nationwide, police are now using ALPR cameras to track the locations and movements of countless law-abiding people who have never been suspected of any crime," end quote. The Institute of Justice Plate Private Project includes nationwide litigation against the use of the warrantless search industry. So if you pass an ALPR provision in the future, it is possible that you would open yourselves up to litigation, which would double harm we, the taxpayers. Thank you for your consideration and removing it from this budget.
Thank you. Next up is Amy McCamley.
Hi, so two, two things. So the first thing is about the city of Hayden, the whole sheriff and police fiasco that's happening with the budget. I was under the understanding that it was in good faith, the negotiation between the city council and this whole thing with the budget. And now it seems like a decision's been made. So I really hope that all the city council are aware of that. Because that's just gonna put the residents, I feel kind of like in the middle of like a heated debate with the council. So hopefully that can get resolved. And then the second thing is about license plate readers. So yes, thank you for removing it out of the budget. But again, we're all speaking up because we feel like, like you said, this could get into the budget at another point in time. So I want to remind you that the Constitution is our contract. Hence my shirt, 1776 forever free. That is our contract. I've heard people say like, oh, well, as long as the contract says these things in it, we're okay with it. Not good enough because those things can constantly be changed with software updating and things without our knowledge. I mean, it's just, it's too much down a slippery slope for us. The other thing is when we talk about in the name of safety, we hear that a lot. Well, we learned that after 9/11. In the name of safety, what ended up happening? Our citizens who are innocent, our rights were being taken away. 2020, in the name of safety. In the name of safety, wear a mask. In the name of safety, get the jab. In the name of safety, don't go to certain places. So then we go back to, well, if you're not doing anything wrong, it shouldn't matter. Well, going back to 2020, a mother taking her children to the park, that was against the law. Mothers were getting arrested for going to the park. People were getting arrested for going to the grocery store. Pastors were getting arrested for opening up churches. That was here in the United States. That was here in Idaho. Because all of a sudden, what we thought was law, all of a sudden, the laws and everything got shifted. So that's the problem with opening up this Pandora's box. So again, we don't want any of it. We're saying no to it. And the disappointing thing is, months ago, I know somebody said, well, how come we weren't aware about this on the line item? And I agree, there's thousands on the budget. Well, we actually did have, I believe it was Commissioner Duncan. We had an open meeting about discussing it. And everybody there, this room was actually more packed. And everybody there that evening, with the exception of maybe one person, all said no. And then somehow, it still got approved. And now we're here having to fight it again. So that's why we're having to come back, back, and back. Because even though we've all said no, it just keeps creeping back in. So we're here to remind you that we're not going to stop saying no. And hopefully, we can just keep, I guess it's our responsibility to make sure our friends and our neighbors know when these meetings are taking place so that our constitutional rights are not being taken away. Thank you.
And if I could just respond to that, the, the elected officials put those in the budget. We, we don't put them in the budget. They're presented to the board in their budget presentations.
Correct.
So it, it's the elected officials that drive these things. And the board, like I mentioned before, is, you know, again, it plays a check by not only adopting a budget, but then also authorizing the expenditure of the funds. And, you know, at least from my personal position, I've said this before. I've said it many times recently, that I was okay with doing it for one year, that the sheriff's office would have to provide the data, that I originally was not, I originally said I wasn't for this. I said, you should pull this out of the budget. And they made a compelling case, and I feel that, you know, we should make data-driven decisions. Now, that does not negate the fact of the concerns of people in this room. Okay? So I've never said I want to do this for a second year or more. I've only said, and I've said this to the sheriff as recently as a week ago, it's one thing to have the money appropriated, it's another for this board to approve it. And that it is up to the sheriff's office to provide a compelling case to the community as to why it should be continued. So I just want to clarify that and just let you know that these items that get into the budget, we don't put them in there.
Correct. Yes, I know that. I guess it was just the fact that in the beginning, it seemed like the vote was going to be no against it. And it was put in, like you said, for that year. So then I heard you say earlier that Commissioner Everline and Duncan are voting to take it out of the budget. Are you voting to take it out of the budget as well, or you're voting to keep it in the budget?
Well, I'm not voting any, at all, because two commissioners gave direction to staff. There was no vote. There was no motion and no vote. But you didn't hear me object, and you didn't hear me advocate.
Well, because that's super convenient, because you did the same thing when we tried doing the traffic camera. So, thank you.
Here's the thing, okay, is, like I said, like I said, the money can be in the budget or cannot be in the budget. It does not prevent it from getting in there later. So, you know, it doesn't matter. If it's not in the budget, it's not in the budget. And, you know, that's one step. So, thank you, though, for your comment. Next up is Bill Breezy.
And I'll just add one thing real quick, that it is super helpful if the citizens can at least watch. If you can't come during the day, I understand. But the end of May, beginning of June, that's when all the elected officials present their budgets. So it's very, very helpful for the citizens to see because they always have to bring new things before us, and then they're highlighted. So I would just encourage, put on your calendar for next year, the beginning of May, to start watching for those elected official meetings. So, and you can go back right now and watch them too. But I would just highly suggest that's a very helpful.
Yeah, well, it does begin in the, the first part of the budget cycle. So, Mr. Breezy, you have three minutes.
I, I am here to also oppose the, the LPRs. But I also have a, a concern about the data and, and how safe it is. We've heard it's 100% safe. It is, it's, can't be hacked, anything else like that. But at, two weeks ago, at the Liberty Without Compromise podcast, Dan Wilson presented several years of where Norris's personal vehicle was. And it had, it had the photograph, it had GPS timestamps and date stamp on it. And if Dan Wilson can get a hold of this, there's a problem. You know? And so I think this needs to be investigated and determine, you know, how safe the data really is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, absolutely, Commissioner.
So regarding, regarding ALPs, Motorola captures everything. So even if your police department or sheriff's department or whatever comes along, Motorola takes it all, and they don't, they don't quit.
Well, I was, I was here when the salesman for Motorola was standing here right at this podium and proudly stated that his software could predict where the vehicle will be based upon the, the driving experience, the driver's habit of the vehicle. They're predicting where your car is going to be. So yes, that's why we are totally opposed to this whole thing.
Well, AI actually allows for those things to happen. So you make a good point. Next up is Jen Noel.
Hi, and thank you for removing the ALPRs from the budget. But I guess my concern is, as elected officials, you took an oath to the Constitution to protect our freedom, and this should be a no-brainer situation. It should have never gone to this point. And our elected constitutional sheriff, you, I, I think that we're wasting a lot of time on something that you should all know. It should be innate. Our freedom is non-negotiable. We don't trade our freedom for safety. And I would hope every elected official knows that so that we don't have to spend time at these meetings begging you to understand and hear us.
Thank you. Next up, Kathy Mickles.
I too want to thank Commissioner Everline and Commissioner Duncan for opposing the license plate readers. And as you have repeatedly heard from the Cootney County citizens, time and time again, license plate readers are not consistent with the spirit of our Constitution, and they build on an already growing surveillance mindset and worldview that will contribute to more surveillance and the undermining of the fundamentals of a free society. LPRs are a piece of the puzzle. Law-abiding, freedom-minded Americans instinctively reject the idea of being spied on by a moving, snoopy camera surveilling every vehicle on the road. The so-called safety argument for officers, as I've said before here, does not supersede the safety of our Fourth Amendment rights or the safety of citizens who find themselves the victims of this technology run amok. How safe do we think the citizens, in a recent news report, felt when a license plate reader got it wrong and law-abiding citizens found themselves on the ground at gunpoint? As someone who in the past played a role in the writing of Republican Party platforms, the support of license plate readers does not represent authentic, conservative, pro-Constitution position, and it would never, never have been embraced by the past platforms of the Republican Party. I am surprised the Republican Party in Cootney County and their elected representatives have not been more vocal on this subject. Through the years, I watched the short-sighted decision-making of elected officials destroy the state that I loved and moved away from. Time and again, well-meaning people were unwilling or unable to connect the dots. Consequently, consequently, they put in place legislation that has now become next to impossible to undo. I hope this body learns from the mistakes that we have made in California and Washington. The last thing we would want to do is to bring to our area the spirit of these two states that have failed its citizens. And thank you again for your vote against LPR.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer, is it Herger? Forgive me if I mispronounced your last name. Written comment, so never mind. "Please do not approve the budget for the ALPRs or any other type of surveillance. Vote no to this violation of our privacy." Thank you. Next up, wishes to speak, is Deborah Rose. Come on down.
My comment is not going to be popular. "The three of you as Cootney County fiduciaries and county lawmakers have a, have been privileged by the voter majority to exercise a reasonable duty of care to your constituents in providing thoughtful and discerning decisions. I'd like to address the money budgeted, and I, I understand that you've already taken it out of the budget, but I drove all the way up here, down here from the north part of the county to have my three minutes, so I'm going to use them, to address the money budgeted for license plate readers installed in deputy vehicles. These readers are an effective law enforcement tool. To calm the angst expressed against these readers, the county could establish a specific and limited-use contract regarding how the data collected can be shared, such as nothing can be shared at all without a documented law enforcement investigation and a search warrant, as is the case in Coeur d'Alene. Technology is used all the time in law enforcement work. Should there be an immediate hit in the NCIC system, the National Crime Information Center, because of the camera, then an officer can act instantly as with an Amber Alert or a stolen vehicle. The use of license plate readers is no different than using search warrants to access information from business cameras along Sherman Avenue. If a crime occurred, the police go to a judge to give them a warrant to access the camera's data. The same process is used by law enforcement to gain access to cell phone call records, including private text messages, photos, and videos. Such access has been used to prove an innocent person's innocence, and I know that. A person of interest can be cleared or an accused individual can be exonerated by using this type of technology. We can only hope our sheriff and prosecutor would act accordingly. While I support funding for license plate readers, I do have to wonder why any honorable person would object to their use or feel a need to place a cover over their license plate." I'd like to, I'd like to address something real quick, I think I have a little more time left, to, to the emergency management services. With all the growth up in my part of the county, the Bayview, Athol area, Spirit Lake area, I think it's time to start looking into putting some money into ALS service up there. The, the time difference to getting people in that area to the proper care that they need is, can be, the six minutes difference can be the difference between life and death for them.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, next up is Amy Fonstrum, wishes to speak.
Hello. My name is Amy Fonstrum, and I live in Coeur d'Alene. The first thing I wanted to mention was, well, okay, so the beginning, when these license plate readers were installed on the cars, just to remind everyone, they were installed without any of us knowing. They were in demo mode with no contract. To me, that's very irresponsible. And also, during that time when the approval for the software was done, the Motorola representative the Motorola representative lied in, in one of our meetings. And then as well, it was, there were 38 vehicles that were approved. And then, soon as it was approved, all of a sudden, I saw that it was actually 48. And I, that was kind of confusing. So I feel like we've just been lied to about everything. The data's not safe. And also, I just feel like I can't trust our sheriff. I feel like he always talks about misinformation, yet lies. Anyway, so the, I guess the main next question I have is, so what now? So the software is not approved. What are the cameras going to be doing from here on out? So it's approved through this year, correct, like through December? But then in January, are they going to be shut off? Or is this, or is the software just for holding the data?
Commissioner.
So how, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner. How long will the data be, like, in January, how long will the data be saved?
So it'll be, my understanding is when the contract ends, then we no longer have access to the data.
But they do. But Motorola does?
But they have to, they have, it's our data, so they have to delete it within our 30-day period.
But, but moving forward in January, are they, they're going to still be recording, right?
No. They, they will be recording their normal traffic stops and everything like that. They record as they go. It will not pick up and identify license plates any longer.
And, I mean, how can we guarantee that unless, unless everything's removed off the vehicles? So is that something you would consider, or anyone, I mean, what would happen? What would, what would need to be done to get that approved, to remove everything?
So the problem is, nowadays, the cameras are for, to record events and accidents essentially, that the officer may or may not get into, that kind of thing. So it, it's been longstanding, we've had these cameras on our cars. So they're just regular Motorola cameras that happen to be able to have this additional software installed. And to have that, my understanding is, we're not going to pay Motorola after December. Therefore, the cameras will no longer have that feature. The feature will be shut off. But it'll still be a normal camera that we have in the cars.
Okay, which, so is there a contract for that?
No. No, it's just, we bought the cameras, it's just like the body cameras. And you can request that, too. You can request the.
So Motorola won't have access to it?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm against them. But I was just curious about what, moving forward, what's going to happen, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Sandy Turner wishes to speak. Come on down.
Hi, Sandy Turner Hayden. I thank you, Commissioners, for taking the LPRs out. From everything that I've heard, I've just, like, edited out so much of what I've written, because I don't want to repeat some of it. But one thing that I want, came to mind when Kathy was speaking, how, when the COVID started, the pandemic, when we were all locked up and masked, and all these cell towers came up. And so here we are. We can't, you know, that's just, we're being surveyed, surveilled all the time. I moved into my new house in Hayden, and they had all the smart everything in there, so I just had them put all the dumb things in there. But my phone, you know, it's just, you can't get away from that too much. So something, a little bit of what I wrote. What Thomas Jefferson said, "When injustice becomes law, resistance becomes duty." Injustice occurs when government officials vote against the stated wish of the people. Injustice occurs when there is a violation of the Fourth Amendment. Injustice occurs when tax dollars are allocated, ignoring these violations, to buy AI for surveillance, when that same money could be used to build community. Deputizing and training persons of all ages to be ears and eyes and mouths for the protection of our communities, and programs to train leaders in neighborhoods for watchmen, readiness, resource, teamwork. In a small town like ours, the percentage of error is much greater with AI surveillance than with a well-trained. I put posse, because I think, I just came from a four-day weekend. Here are the watchmen, and there were quite a few people there from counties with posse's of 1,000 and more. And that's to support the sheriff, to support the county and the community in so many ways. AI is a permanent installation, can be hacked, shares ID without permission, and makes errors and false arrests, like happened to R.J. Sixer here, being arrested in Rafferty two years after, because they tracked that he was in DC via his cellphone on that day. I think we can do better as a community. We have the right grit here, and the largest number of militia than most states to back us up. I hope our Commissioners and our Sheriff's Department will see this, too, that same money reallocated can involve our citizens and have a much greater success rate than the illegal use of AI, breaking the Fourth Amendment, and much, much more. The Constitution was written under the authority that we have the power to govern and protect ourselves, to fight for our liberty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Next up is Donna Mills wishes to speak.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this time. My name is Donna Mills. I'm an ordained minister in this town. You believe in that sign behind you? Do you believe in that sign behind you?
Of course.
Okay, then that is the only Lord we need over us. I thank you for taking that out. I'm concerned with a sheriff that uses the word dirtbags for other citizens.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but you are to address the board.
Oh, I'm, okay. I'm concerned with a sheriff that refers to other citizens as dirtbags. When we are all, if we all believe in God, we're all connected, there is no separation. This evening, I heard some unfortunate conversation and just the way that it was spoken about. You, sir, how do you pronounce your last name, Bruce?
Matarri.
Matarri, thank you. What I heard from you is you said that, you made a comment about south of us and what resources they would get, but then you said that most of the crime is in the city. So I don't see the point of the comment that you made protecting the outlying areas if crime is here in the city. So I'm finding redundancy and also contradiction in some of your words.
If I could, real quick, though. I get emails from people in the unincorporated part of the county who ask about patrol services. They have not seen patrol services. So while I appreciate the rational approach that you've taken, there are citizens in those more rural places that would like to see patrol. It's not uncommon for people to have shops with valuable items inside those shops, and people go on people's property to look and see what's inside those shops. And there has been a rash, when I first moved here, of people's shops being robbed. So, and that is a very rural area. And there's not much that can be done after the fact. So anyhow, I'm sorry to interrupt. You can continue, please.
I, I can extrapolate, though, I'm intelligent. I would hope that there would be enough resources for all of our county, and that we don't discriminate between in-town and out-of-town, or Athol, or Bayview, or anyplace like that. And of course, those people need services to get them quicker to where we are. I would rather see budget allocated to our citizens. What do our citizens need? Not how to control our citizens. What do our citizens need? What do our kids need? What do we need to come back into wellness and come back in, to come correct after COVID? What do we need for our mental health? Maybe we start taking care of people, and we won't need surveillance. I appreciate that you guys have taken it out. I'm here to ask you to come correct, to use adult behavior, to look at Hayden as part of our community, and to say, whatever it takes, we will, we will take care of them, because they're our neighbors. What I heard from you, Mr. Everline? Yeah. I'll, I'll remember this when I vote.
Thank you. Next up, Sandra White. Would you like to speak? Come on down.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I'm Sandra White. I'm on the Hayden City Council, but I'm here speaking for myself alone. And I want to speak regarding the law enforcement services possibly ending in September. And I just, I'm speaking for the taxpayers who have shown good faith in the sheriff's department. And I would just like to ask that you reconsider and give us a little more time to work on a contract, and I believe we can come to some kind of arrangement. So I'm just speaking for the people and appealing to you tonight. So thank you for your service. I appreciate you. Thank you.
And thank you for your service, too.
Thank you.
That's it for any sheets of paper for people who wish to speak. Just, I think, just as a courtesy, I'll ask if anyone in the room would like to speak who did not fill out a card and would like to say something. Going once? Going twice? Is there anybody on the telephone who would like to speak? Or online, that you can see? No? Okay. Well, then I would take a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
Second.
Commissioner Everline.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chair Matarri.
Aye. Okay, well, the first item we have is the approval of the AquaFur Protection District FY26 budget. It's a action item, and unless anyone has comment, thoughts, objections, I take a motion.
I, I think it's a fairly good budget, and so I support its adoption. So I move that we approve the AquaFur Protection District FY26 budget.
Second.
Commissioner Everline.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chair Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is item five, and this is the approval of the Cootney County Emergency Medical Services System FY26 budget. I think it's a great job that they went up basically negligibly, negligibly between last year and this year. So if anyone, unless anyone has any questions or comments, I'll take a motion on that.
I move that we approve the Cootney County Emergency Medical Services System FY26 budget.
Second.
Commissioner Everline.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chair Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is item six, approval of the Cootney County FY26 budget. It's an action item. I kind of feel like we have made amendments to the budget to get it to where this board wants. Are there questions, concerns, anything that someone wants to say that would create an issue where we could not proceed and approve this right now?
I don't have any issues.
I think we could. Okay, well, with, with that said, I'll take a motion.
I move that we fix and determine the Cootney County FY26 budget.
Second.
Commissioner Everline.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chair Matarri.
Aye. Motion carries. With that said, I would like to just offer a special thank you to Brandy Falcon. The work that you have done to help us along the way, and you too, Clerk Locke, and your staff to get us to this point is so greatly appreciated. Your professionalism, your competency is, in my opinion, off the charts. And I think I speak for the board that I really appreciate the efforts that you put in to get us here right now. So thank you. Thank you. Yeah, and thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I appreciate your comments. And with that said, it's 8:35, meeting adjourned.